Good evening, everybody. On this beautiful October 25th evening in Westfield, Indiana. Welcome to your City Hall. We will begin with our Pledge of Allegiance. And is Kara Busburger here? Okay, very good. We'll ask you to give our invocation following. Thank you so much. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for the opportunity. Let us pray. Dear wise and loving Lord, first, thank you. Thank you for the city of Westfield. Thank you for these leaders. Thank you for these citizens. And we pray for this meeting ahead and the assembled council. Grant them wisdom and clarity in decisions to be made. Show them a sense of the welfare and the true needs of the people. Give them the ability to work together in harmony even when there may be disagreement. Grant them and us the wisdom and courage to know and to do what is right and good. And may they and we always be guided by the spirit of community and by the spirit of love. And so this we pray in the name of all we hold sacred and holy in Jesus Christ. Amen.
Pastor, thank you. From Christ United Methodist Church. Mr. Johns, would you like to run the meeting, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Cindy Gassert, would you please note the presence of a quorum?
Here.
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 I am here, but I cannot. I thought I heard her say my name, but I cannot hear her.
I did say your name.
This is Troy Patton.
Okay.
Okay.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, first thing on our agenda would be to announce any changes to the agenda. We actually have two changes to tonight's agenda. First, under old business, we are removing ordinance 2148, authorizing the creation of an American Rescue Plan Act plan and appropriating monies for the city of Westfield ARP Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund from this evening's agenda. This ordinance was scheduled for a public hearing this evening, but not properly noticed. So we move back for a public hearing on Monday, November 8th, followed immediately by adoption consideration on November 8th. The second change is a resolution 21-135, approving equipment lease financing has been added to the agenda for this evening. It is up for adoption consideration this evening. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from October 11th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Motion made by Scott Willis, seconded by Jake Gilbert. Can I please have the call, roll call, Cindy?
Scott Frye.
Yes.
Mike Johns.
Yes.
Troy Patton.
Yes.
Jake Gilbert.
Yes.
Cindy Spaljery.
Yes.
Scott Willis.
Yes.
Joe Edwards.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
The second item here is the approval of the minutes from our special meeting on October 20th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second, Troy Patton.
Okay, motion made by Cindy Spaljery, seconded by Troy Patton. Cindy Gassert, would you please call a roll?
Jake Gilbert.
Yes.
Cindy Spaljery.
Yes.
Scott Willis.
Yes.
Joe Edwards.
Yes.
Troy Patton.
Yes.
Scott Frye.
Yes.
Mike Johns.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the approval of the claims docket for October 25th, 2021. Counselors, do you have any questions or comments regarding the claims docket? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the claims docket for October 25th?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Scott Willis, seconded by Jake Gilbert. Cindy Gassert, would you please call the roll?
Scott Willis.
Yes.
Jake Gilbert.
Yes.
Cindy Spaljery.
Yes.
Joe Edwards.
Yes.
Mike Johns.
Yes.
Troy Patton.
Yes.
Scott Frye.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
We have one item of special recognition, or excuse me, a special business presentation on our agenda this evening, and I'm going to ask the mayor, Mayor Cook, please announce that.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Johns. Tonight, we will be presented with the results of the review of the city operations and finances. A brief history of this, I know when this council was campaigning, not quite two years ago, they wanted to declare they would like to do a complete audit of this city, perhaps in lieu of, in addition to, the annual State Board of Accounts review. And this administration fully supports that desire. In the summer of 2020, there was some council mention of improprieties financially with the city, particularly involving Grand Park. Shortly after that, this administration invoked the state law, given the powers to me to order such an investigation into the city. And in August, September of 2020, we engaged three firms to conduct this investigation of our city operations and a forensic financial audit. We expected this to take about six months at that time. The counsel's concern when we opened this up was that the administration would be involved in the results as we go along, or see results before it was completed. And I pledged to all of you at that time that we would all be presented with those results at the same time, and that will happen tonight. I have not seen this report. I have not discussed it with any of the people that will be presenting to you. I'd like to add that we take great pride in the financial and the overall wherewithal of this city. I think we all take great pride in that. We've been recognized through the years as a top city, and as recently as just within the last 30 days, Wallet Hub recognized Westfield. Out of 1,300 cities across America, between 25,000 and 100,000 population, out of all those cities, Westfield was ranked number 11 in the country as the best cities all across America. And I think we all take great pride in that kind of recognition, and I know we wish to continue down that very same path. With that in mind, I'd like to further pledge to all of our citizens that this administration will endeavor to work with the City Council Oversight Committee to correct any and all deficiencies and to implement improvements as indicated by this report. Mr. Klutz, the floor is yours, sir.
Good evening. My name is Zach Klutz. I am one of the three appointees appointed by Mayor Cook pursuant to Indiana Code 36457, which is a statute that permits a city executive to order a panel to review a city's accounts and property, and then to report on the results of the investigation. With me this evening are the two other appointees, Dan Hedden of Baker Tilly and Brian Callahan of BKD. Some of my preliminary comments may echo a bit of the mayor's, but I think they will help set the context for the presentation. As you may recall, at a special meeting of the common council on September 1st, 2020, myself, Brian, and Dan presented to both the mayor and this body regarding the scope of our work with respect to our appointments and the examination process. Baker Tilly's work and examination would focus on an operational review, an assessment of the city of Westfield, primarily focused, primarily as it relates to financial matters. BKD would undertake a forensic audit of the city's books and accounts designated to detect fraud, waste, and abuse. Following September 1st, 2020, at our presentation, we commenced work on September 2nd, 2020, the day after. The purpose of our presentation this evening is to present to both the mayor and this body an executive summary of each report, one prepared by Baker Tilly, the other prepared by BKD. At the conclusion of the respective presentations, we will simultaneously deliver the full reports to both the mayor and the common council. As the mayor said, neither of the reports, the contents of such reports, nor any executive summary, have been shared with any member of the city administration, the mayor, or city council. In addition, each report was prepared solely by each respective firm. Neither report was jointly or collaboratively prepared by the three of us or our firms. Upon delivery of the full reports and at the conclusion of this presentation, as our position, our task to examine the accounts, books, and records of the city will have been complete, and we will request the mayor terminate our appointments. Before BKD and Baker Tilly present their respective executive summaries, I think a few preliminary comments may be beneficial. Starting virtually at the commencement of our work, we are aware of allegations that we were directed by the mayor or city administration officials to target certain parties or officials as part of the examination, or that we are otherwise instructed to include or not include certain things in the reports. This is patently false and did not occur. No such instructions, directions, or suggestions were ever made directly or indirectly to myself, Dan, or Brian. Had they been, such directives would have been ignored. In addition, we read or heard of various allegations of bias of the appointees in favor of the mayor or the city administration by virtue of its appointment of us. Such allegations were made, we believe, for the purpose of questioning BKD and Baker Tilly's independence and the independence of the reports being delivered this evening. Again, during the entirety of this process, we did not favor any official or body or government over another, and we believe the contents of the report will support this statement of fact. While it's certainly accurate that much of our requests and therefore interaction during this process were directed to the clerk treasurer, such interactions was by necessity, as the clerk treasurer maintains the books, documents, and records of the city, which were needed by BKD and Baker Tilly to complete their examinations. I believe a few preliminary comments regarding the timing of the examination process may also be beneficial. During the September 1st, 2020 special meeting in our presentation that I referenced earlier, we utilized a seven-point PowerPoint presentation, seven-slide PowerPoint presentation to assist with our introduction and summarize our proposed scope of work. Slide seven of the presentation, our final slide, provided, quote, "A successful forensic investigation and operational assessment will require, one, access and timely responses for city information, records, and documents; two, access to city data and software platforms, including login credentials and access to the city's P-card, Navigator, and ADP accounts; and, three, access to and cooperation by city officials, employees, and personnel." Interviews of city council members commenced September 14th and continued on September 15th. Initial interviews with the clerk treasurer's office were conducted on September 18th, and interviews with city administration officials, including the mayor, were conducted shortly thereafter. As summarized in the respective reports, BKD and Baker Tilly also met with members of the city's RDC, current and former employees of the city, members associated with Grand Park, and city economic development officials. In addition to these stakeholder meetings, we generally received timely responses from the common council and the city administration to our various requests for information and documents, and the information you guys provided was responsive to BKD and Baker Tilly's underlying requests and for that cooperation, we thank you. Unfortunately, we did not receive access or timely responses to our requests for information, records, data, and documents directed to the clerk treasurer and her office, which requests were initially provided to the clerk treasurer via correspondence dated September 2nd, the day after our initial presentation. You will see that the BKD report provides a detailed outline and summary of our various and numerous attempts to obtain information and data from the clerk treasurer, nearly all of which are evidenced by written correspondence or emails confirming our efforts. Even when information was provided by the clerk treasurer, the information we received was often incomplete, the wrong information, in the wrong format, or simply not responsive to our underlying request. During this examination process, we also faced and were required to maneuver through three to four lawsuits, each of which would generally cause a stoppage of BKD. To a certain extent, Baker Tilly's ability to easily communicate with the clerk treasurer or the city and required request or communication to go through legal counsel of the respective parties involved in the litigation. While the litigation certainly caused delays, one possible benefit was that such lawsuit resulted in an agreed entry dated February 1st, 2021, exactly five months to the day after this process began, in which the clerk treasurer agreed to provide BKD with bank statements, check copies, payroll data files, and purchase card data. Finally, another event that caused a rather significant delay in our delivery of reports this evening occurred in late February 2021, when the clerk treasurer's office undertook to destroy, through Indiana Statutory Document Destruction Process, purportedly over 200 boxes of city records, files, and documents maintained by the clerk treasurer's office. According to the clerk treasurer's office, such document destruction is undertaken, quote, "once a year for documents over 10 years," close quote. In this instance, the document destruction was initiated by the clerk treasurer's office upon filing a notice of destruction of non-permanent records with the Indiana Archives and Records Administration in accordance with Indiana statute. However, because of the large volume of documents sought to be destroyed, the firm completed by the clerk's office identified 216 boxes, and the fact that it was occurring during an audit process, and while information and document requests were pending, we did undertake efforts to review the information the clerk treasurer's office sought to destroy. In addition, we were told this document destruction process is done each year by the clerk treasurer's office, and we took steps to verify this statement. Following a public information request we filed with the Indiana Archives and Records Administration, we were informed by such state agency that, quote, "After a complete review of all records submitted to the Indiana Archives and Records Administration for the past four years, our agency does not have any notices of destruction submitted by the Westfield Clerk Treasurer's Office other than the one filed in 2021." This incident is more fully detailed than BKD's report, and similar to the previously mentioned litigation, this event caused delays and hurdles in our ability to conduct and finalize the examination process. To conclude, this examination likely could have been completed in four to six months from our initial September 2020 start date. I believe this time estimate was the one we originally provided this body on that date. The incidents and delays I just summarized, as well as a myriad of other events and roadblocks set forth in each report, caused this process to require nearly 13 months, approximately three times longer than anyone thought or predicted. With that context and for purposes of presenting an executive summary of its report, I'll turn it over to Brian Callahan of BKD, and Brian Hedon of Baker Tilly will follow. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach, and good evening, everybody. It's my pleasure to be here with you tonight, and I appreciate the opportunity. So as you're aware, on July 30th, 2020, I was appointed by Mayor Cook to conduct an investigation along with Baker Tilly and Taft into the city's finances and financial operations. As you'll recall, BKD's focus was to investigate for evidence of potential fraud, waste, and abuse. We conducted our investigation using a number of different approaches, including interviews, tools, and different procedures, the results of which are summarized in the report you will receive tonight. In total, we conducted over 19 interviews, performed 17 background checks, forensically analyzed over 7.1 million emails, 408,000 audit log changes, forensically tested over 18,000 transactions, and dozens of other relationship matches, accounting entries, contracts, and other transactions. On September 1st, 2020, we made a presentation here to the city council, as Mr. Klutz had mentioned, and I mentioned here that we worked for those three exact same things: access and timely responses to requests for city information, records, and documents; access to city data and software platforms; access to and cooperation from city officials, employees, and personnel. Our report lays out a timeline in detail of the delays and difficulties we encountered while trying to obtain information needed to conduct the investigation. We did not have the data and documents we needed until the summer of 2021. In the ensuing time, there were numerous lawsuits filed, accusations of malfeasance, and general discord between elected officials throughout the process. Despite news stories to the contrary, we did not request full access to the city's data systems and documents. In fact, on October 14th, 2020, Mr. Klutz wrote a letter to the clerk treasurer, which stated, "Please note that we do not require direct access at this time and may not need direct access at all. Rather, please simply export the needed data files as more specifically described in the attached data and document request list to any non-PDF file that may be most convenient to you and your office. A true and accurate copy of this letter is included as Exhibit 3 to my report." Further, on May 21st of 2021, the clerk treasurer, through her attorney, made accusations that a third party used, quote-unquote, "spyware" on her office. The letter also insinuated BKD was either the third party or somehow involved. On May 26th, 2021, we responded to Mr. Webster's letter regarding the Beyond Trust application, stating the following: "BKD has not used Beyond Trust technology in any way, nor have we used any remote management software. BKD did not instruct others to purchase or install Beyond Trust software on any city of Westfield computers. As our understanding, the city of Westfield has used this software since 2010. However, BKD had no knowledge of this software prior to the May 21, 2021, letter from Mr. Webster." We further noted that the BKD employee identified has no personal or professional AT&amp;T accounts, and the employee's use of his BKD email to log into an AT&amp;T account is irrational and nonsensical. We concluded the letter as follows: "We will not allow Mr. Webster to undermine the credibility of our investigation with false accusations against BKD. We welcome the city of Westfield council's questions on this matter so we can quickly move past this distraction and complete our investigation." We note that Veracity IIR, who was hired by the clerk treasurer to investigate the use of the Beyond Trust software, made no reference to BKD in their report. Despite these challenges, we have delivered a complete, objective, and I hope, helpful analysis for the city's consideration. In total, our report is 466 pages, including 397 pages of exhibits and documents supporting our observations and findings. As agreed to at the start of this process, our report has not been shared with anyone from the city prior to tonight. In the interest of time, I have condensed some of our more significant findings to share with you, and they are as follows. First, a frequent concern raised in most of the interviews involved the agreements between Grand Park and vendors, including Bullpen and ProX. According to one employee, contracts relating to Grand Park have not been updated for new terms and are considered sloppy. Other interviewees also stated that they believe the Grand Park contracts, particularly Bullpen, were originally in print, but modifications in recent years have been only verbal. This was later confirmed by John Rogers, who oversees contracts relating to Grand Park. We also noted that the verbal modification to the Bullpen agreement gave them the right to keep ticket sales in exchange for maintaining common areas surrounding baseball diamonds, the baseball and softball diamonds. The Westfield Redevelopment Commission met in March of 2021 and consented to enter new agreements with Bullpen, which memorialized verbal modification of ticket sales in exchange for maintenance. The term of the agreement, or the amendment, was defined as January 1, 2018, to April 19, 2021. As shown in Exhibit 13, the Diamond Sports Facility's Common Area Landscape and Maintenance Services Agreement was executed on April 19, 2021, between the RDC and Sports Field Maintenance LLC. The initial term was defined as April 19, 2021, through December 31, 2025, with an option for extension. We believe this issue has been resolved. However, a primary concern and basis for our investigation was the existence of contracts between Grand Park and other outside vendors. To test the existence of contracts, we obtained current and expired contracts from the city relating to Grand Park. We also utilized canceled checks for Grand Park bank accounts and other cash outflows from the bank statements for Grand Park. Essentially, we're testing the cash outflows and tracing them back to contracts. Out of the 72 cash outflows tested, 37 appear to be for products or services purchased as needed, rather than payments subject to contractual terms. For the remaining 35 payments, we were able to identify 28 contracts, in quotes, four of which were not signed. The seven other payments for which we could not identify contracts, Mr. Knox indicated invoice details serve as the contract for some of these, and others do not have a contract in place. The details of our contract analysis are in our report. Based on our testing, it does not appear the use of verbal contracts is pervasive, but Grand Park should be more diligent in making sure written contracts are in place and terms are followed. Another area of concern was ProX. It is well-known that ProX was started by Joe Thatcher, Mayor Cook's nephew. In November 2017, a concern was raised by Sue Estep, owner of Round Tripper Academy, in which she stated that Mayor Cook had recently awarded a, quote-unquote, "sweetheart deal" to his nephew, who began ProX's project. ProX is a competitor to Round Trip Academy. In December 2017, a reporter from the IBJ requested comment for questions regarding the Round Tripper Academy issue. Erin Murphy, Communications Director, responded to the question, stating that the RFP for land for Grand Park was advertised to two news outlets and given proper time for bidders. Ms. Murphy stated that businesses were not contacted directly, as output businesses and developers who were not contacted at a disadvantage. When asked whether anyone notified ProX about the RFP, Ms. Murphy simply stated, "Westfield does not solicit bids." Ms. Murphy further stated that Mayor Cook, that Mayor Cook had recused himself from the process and did not take part in any negotiations or communications with the responder. Based on the proposal submitted by ProX, our understanding is that the lease of Grand Park Lot 2 Development Parcel RFP was posted on July 19th and July 26th, 2017, and the Westfield Redevelopment Commission accepted bids through August 7th of 2017. As a result of questions regarding the RFP process, we ran additional searches for emails, including Joe Thatcher, prior to July of 2017. During our analysis of the pre-proposal emails, we identified a series of emails of interest and discussed them with Mr. Bertrand. The details are in our report, but in summary, we identified emails between Mr. Dalton, who was working with Mr. Thatcher on the ProX concept, and Mr. Bertrand, prior to the issuance of the RFP, including a project update from Mr. Dalton. We identified an email from Mr. Thatcher to Mayor Cook on June 14th, 2017, that included project drawings. We searched for but did not locate additional communications between the mayor and Mr. Thatcher. In summary, there were communications between Mr. Thatcher, the mayor, and his administration prior to the ProX RFP being issued. It appears that information from Mr. Dalton served as the basis for the RFP. Another item that came to our attention during the investigation was the potential personal use of a city vehicle. We were made aware of a call received by Mr. Bertrand from someone in the city, asking if he was aware of a clerk treasurer office employee's personal use of a city pool vehicle to travel to Colorado. Ms. String was identified by the caller as the employee who allegedly used the vehicle. It was also alleged that Cindy Gassert joined Ms. String for the trip. Based on this information, we identified an email communication from Beverly Rawlings, Deputy Clerk Treasurer, discussing a girls' trip to Colorado, which was to occur May 8th, 2018, through May 15th, 2018, with Ms. Rawlings, Ms. Gassert, and Ms. String. The emails are included as exhibits. Further, Mr. Stetnis, the individual in charge of the city's pool fleet, and Mr. Lawler, Director of Public Works, both recall a vehicle checkout for Ms. Gassert and Ms. String. They both mentioned it was unusual for the clerk treasurer's office to borrow a car and cannot recall any other instances when the clerk treasurer's office has borrowed vehicles before or since this time. Mr. Stetnis further indicated that the vehicle potentially used by Ms. Rawlings, Gassert, and String was vehicle ID 1761, and that he remembered a vehicle being checked out around May of 2018. It is our understanding that the fuel system used by the city was called Fuel Master Legacy in 2018, now called Fuel Master Live. The Fuel Master system is owned by the Westfield Washington School District. The school district provides monthly reports of fuel usage to the city. We obtained an archived fuel depot reports for the month of April through July of 2018 from the city for analysis and noted the following: Vehicle 1761 was fueled on May 16th, the day after the stated date of return from the, quote-unquote, "girls' trip," and the odometer reading and employee name were both blank. The odometer reading for vehicle 1761 was not populated on any of the April through July 2018 reports provided to us. The employee name was included in all of the fuel records except the May 16th instance above. To verify the Fuel Master reports provided by the city were accurate and unaltered, we obtained the 2018 Fuel Master Legacy records directly from the school district, noting they were identical to those produced by the city. We further found that vehicle 1761 was refueled 13 times in 2018, and none of the entries had an odometer reading associated with the fueling. On October 14th, 2021, we inquired with Ms. Gassert regarding the alleged girls' trip. William Webster, Ms. Gassert's counselor, responded for her, stating, "For their vacation to Colorado, no city vehicle was used." However, no support for this statement was provided. However, no support for this statement was provided. Mr. Webster also stated that certain clerk treasurer employees did borrow a vehicle to attend a training in South Bend, Indiana, in June of two thousand and eighteen. He forwarded certifications of attendance for these employees. After the response from Mr. Webster, we spoke again with Mr. Stetnis and Mr. Lawler an additional time regarding their perspective. They recalled the trip taking longer than a few days, and it was to a destination a long way from Westfield. They stated, "A couple, a couple-day trip to South Bend is not a request that would have raised a concern." We also note that other similar trainings from the State Board of Accounts have been held outside of the Indianapolis area since this time, and no one from the clerk treasurer's office has borrowed vehicles to attend these meetings. We find the evidence related to this trip to be inconclusive. During our investigation, it was also brought to our attention that the clerk treasurer's office personnel requested assistance in disposing of certain boxes containing historical financial documents. Kim String, payroll specialist, noted the boxes were mostly old utility records, but they need destroyed, and that the clerk treasurer's office does this once a year for things over ten years old. A public works employee informed Travis Stetnis that most of the boxes either say payroll or ADP on them, as well as a few that just said mayor on them. I was told that the crew was instructed to just throw away the boxes in the dumpster, quote, close quote. It is our understanding that certain boxes in the dumpster were then removed and taken to a Department of Public Works building, as well as documents set for destruction at the city's document destruction provider or returned to the city in large bins. We went on site and reviewed fifteen boxes in five large bins. We were shown a notice of destruction of non-permanent records dated January fifth of two thousand and twenty-one, which listed two hundred and sixteen boxes. A public records request was sent to Marilyn Fernandez, the Deputy Director of Indiana Archives and Records Administration, requesting copies of the notices. Ms. Fernandez responded stating, "I completed a review of all records submitted to the IARA for two thousand and seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty today. The IARA does not have any notices of destruction submitted in those years from the City of Westfield." So either documents were destroyed in the previous years without filing the required documents from the state, or the clerk treasurer's office does not, in fact, destroy old documents once a year as stated by Ms. String. We note that the years of the documents, uh, sent for destruction range from two thousand and eight through two thousand and fourteen. Another item from our investigation includes multiple purchasing card policy violations by the clerk treasurer's office. The policy requires certain actions by the clerk treasurer in her capacity, but we, there, we noted a lack of, a lack of annual assessments, a lack of record maintenance, and a lack of proper reviews. Including both clerk treasurer office employees and other city employees, we noted transactions over credit limits, a lack of credit limits, and inadequate supporting documentation. A number of the transactions identified were questionable in nature, and the receipts provided not clearly state the business purpose. The details related to our P-card investigation are in our report. Again, these are not all our findings. I encourage you to read our report in detail. I believe you'll find it helpful and hopefully informative, and I appreciate the opportunity to assist the city, and now invite Dan Haddon to share Baker Tilly's summary. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Zach. Uh, my name is, uh, Dan Haddon from Baker Tilly. On July thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, I accepted the appointment from Mayor Cook to serve, um, on this, as an appointee to this committee, uh, to examine the city's accounts and property in the possession or custody of any city department, officer, or employee. Uh, per that appointment, we are tasked, uh, to report the results of our work to Mayor Cook. Uh, Mayor Cook has agreed that our report will instead be simultaneously delivered to him and the council at this venue. Uh, neither Mayor Cook nor any other department, officer, or employee of the city has seen our report in whole or in part prior to today's meeting. I want to briefly recap my team and talk about Baker Tilly's, uh, service to the city. Uh, Baker Tilly agreed to deliver an operational assessment to the city of the accounts, property, and processes using a systematic approach to mobilize, probe, analyze, clarify our findings, and report, uh, uh, report our findings. The result is a proposed path to transform the city. Our team that led this project has over seventy-five years of local government experience, forty-five of those years here in Indiana. Uh, personally, I'm CPA, I'm a municipal advisor, I'm a partner at Baker Tilly, and I've worked solely in local government since nineteen ninety-six. I've been a bond consultant, a rate consultant, a municipal advisor, project consultant. I currently assist over twenty larger units of government across the state to compile their financial statements in accordance with GAAP. And I give back to the industry as a frequent speaker on then emerging issues such as Gatsby thirty-four, fringe benefits, internal controls, GAAP reporting, regulatory reporting, capital asset reporting, and accounting software conversions. In addition to my experience, uh, David Eisenlohr, who can't be here tonight, brings over thirty years of experience helping state and local government, state and local government organizations all over the United States to improve their performance and results. As both an operational manager and a highly regarded management consultant, he is an insightful analyst, a skilled facilitator, and he works closely with governing bodies and senior leadership teams to help them develop strategic clarity, establish priorities, improve organizational performance, and streamline business processes and technologies. Ironically, he's at a retreat doing that tonight, which is why he can't be here. Our project leadership team also includes Jenny Carmack behind me. Jenny's a CPA with twenty-two years of experience in Indiana as an auditor and as a consultant. Uh, she has direct historical experience with the City of Westfield as their auditor and as an audit manager. Uh, Jenny has been instrumental in matters related to Indiana code, internal controls, and accounting and reporting matters. Her insight through this process has been invaluable. As you read our report, a few themes will emerge. I want to go through, uh, some of those with you tonight, and I trust that you'll receive our findings as constructive, as accurate, fair, and compelling, as that is how they are intended. Our report has two main parts: standalone executive summary, and then a more detailed report. I did not get up to three hundred pages. Mine is about seventy pages. Our report resulted in several suggestions that are now yours to consider and to pursue. We suggest that you thoughtfully and purposefully consider the suggestions in our report. Our recommendations are rooted in best practice, supported by industry-leading organizations, and at their core, they're practical and achievable, but not without a collective step of the mayor, the clerk treasurer, and the council towards the center and middle ground. Specific themes, specific themes, excuse me, that will emerge are pillars of leadership. Based on our research, uh, we find that the city has, has deficiencies and room for import improvement in each of the recognized areas of civic leadership to include establishing a long-term vision, building trust and open communication, using collective decision-making, creating clear rules, and treating everyone fairly. All of this is detailed in our report. Theme number two: We universally agree that the rapid growth of the city in terms of your population, the services you provide, has materially outpaced the city's ability to evolve its management and administrative practices. We've talked about this in the earlier presentations. Your historical informal policies, procedures, and habits no longer fit a vibrant city whose mission statement is, and I quote, "The city is committed to redefining government by demonstrating integrity and fiscal stewardship while providing quality service to our community," close quote. Theme three: We interviewed several people, staff, elected officials alike. We found the staff to be knowledgeable, competent, and engaged public servants to the city. Our team is collectively impressed with their candor, their commitment to this process, and their willingness to be forthcoming about the strengths and weaknesses of the city. On behalf of my team, I want to thank them, and they're all named in our report. Theme four: We've talked about it in both other presentations. The lawsuits, the editorials, the dysfunctional and nonexistent relationship between certain elected officials is harmful. During this process, three lawsuits have occurred. One of them subpoenaed me. In our opinion, none of them have resolved the underlying pillars of strength issues discussed earlier, and none of them have seemed to improve the city. We trust that readers will agree that this culture must change. Theme five: The core issues that led to this project centered around concerns of fraud, waste, and abuse. We did not find evidence to support fraud. We did, however, find matters that led, uh, to us conclude waste and abuse. This was concluded in terms of behavior pertaining to the lack of adherence to written policies, established, uh, policies, lack of, lack of written policies, procedures, and internal controls, all of which, had they been in place, would likely have increased the elected and public confidence and promoted the very transparency that would have negated the need for the service. Uh, theme six, and this is my final: We have provided actionable recommendations in the areas of municipal governments in our report, I mean, business processes and internal controls and organizational effectiveness. Specifically, our report presents the city with a path forward, including the following recommendations. One is to undertake a facilitated leadership retreat to reset your communication culture, establish your standard rules of engagement at all levels of your government. Number two: Undertake a comprehensive, inclusive, strategic planning process for the municipal organization, including an expansion of your capital improvement planning process. Number three: Strongly consider the formation of an internal audit department. Number four: Strongly consider the adoption of a second-class city status under Indiana code. And then finally, develop and adopt an information technology and data governance process to release the grip on valuable management data and achieve a return on your investment from your very robust data analytics tools. You have world-class tools here that are not being fully utilized. In closing, on behalf of the entire group, I want to highlight some of the many positive things that impressed our team. And again, we have seventy-five years of experience, and there's some positive things that stuck out here that we, that we do want to highlight. One, as mentioned before, city employees impressed us with their knowledge and their collective optimism. The city has several examples of innovation and creative thinking evidenced by the Grand, Grand Park Sports Complex as a growth engine and economic development catalyst, investments in and supportive development projects such as your Grand Junction Plaza, Union Square, and your Grand Millennium Center District, your bike and trail system, evidence of your community growth, including by our, by our tally, a record number of building permits issued in two thousand and twenty, the creation of your Open Gov Financial Transparency Website is innovative in this market, your investments in your accounting and reporting tools. And generally speaking, it's clear people want to live here, they want to work here, and they want to play here. Finally, the establishment of the Enterprise Development Office. This is a unique approach that I don't see in other communities across the state to focus on efficiency, improvement, innovation, data analytics, and other creative approaches to, uh, service delivery. This concludes our presentations, and at this point, we'll hand out our reports.
Will you be emailing this out to everybody?
Troy, we couldn't hear you.
I just wanted to see if they're emailing it out to, to us, or, or if they'll leave a copy at my seat, and I'll come pick it up Saturday or something.
Anne has your copy, Troy.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and with that, we will, uh, your contract is terminated. You've delivered what you were contracted to do. Thank you all very, very much. Good evening.
I, if, if I could ask one question, I, I don't really have any questions, but, uh, once we go through these, are you, uh, both willing to, um, come to the Finance Committee and just talk for about thirty minutes on some of the, uh, on some of the items in the report? Obviously, I think there's a lot of good things that you've discussed tonight, so, um, uh, is that, is that possib- a possibility?
I guess we hadn't discussed a, a Q and A.
No, we have not.
And I, it's our opinion that the, the reports are, are self-explanatory and speak for themselves, and we were, we consider the, the appointments terminated this evening with the conclusion of our work.
Meaning any further action would be at a appropriate cost?
Yeah, no problem. I just thought maybe a thirty-minute conversation about it would be helpful, but that's okay. I, I mean, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on, I do have a couple things to say about the vehicle. We do have where we, um, rented a vehicle to take to Colorado the first of May. We actually got Angie Smitherman's red Jeep Cherokee to take to the ILMCT conference, and we have proof for that. We also have proof of us renting a vehicle to take to Colorado on our girls' trip, but I didn't think it was the, uh, the mayor or his friends. I didn't think it was any of their business, and I didn't have to explain. I see people in the audience. Um, anyway, I don't have to explain my vacation. It was my personal vacation. The mayor doesn't explain his when he's not here. So I didn't see that, and I would love to see their timeline because I have a very detailed timeline that I have passed out to the council, and I would love to see what the review team, and it was what was expected. It was just, as the administration or the mayor doesn't do anything wrong, it has to be the clerk's office. So, I'm finished for now.
Thank you.
All right, uh, again, Mayor Cook, we have a, a report that was presented to us. Um, I'm going to ask all the council members, we will take our time and do our diligence and read through that report, and I would think that we should get, get back together as a group and perhaps discuss it more in detail.
Absolutely. We have a lot to digest.
We do. Thank you so much, and, and thanks again to, uh, Baker Tilly, BKD, and TAP for their work in presenting and preparing that report. Moving on then to old business this evening. Uh, first item is Resolution twenty-one dash one-two-five, which is confirming declaration of cer- of a certain area within the city, an economically revitalization area, Wright's Grand Park LLC. This particular resolution was introduced at the council on July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. Um, and, do I have anyone, Kai, would you, you're here too. Kai Chuck will, I guess, address this and explain this in greater detail to us.
Uh, good evening, councilors. For the record, Kai Chuck, the Economic Department Department. Uh, tonight, uh, we are confirming the Wright Property LLC ERA, Economic Revitalization, Revitalization Area, excuse me, on approximately four acres located at three sixty East One Eighty-Six Street, uh, Grand Park, uh, campus, uh, where approximately a thirty-seven-thousand square foot facility will be built at the value of five-point-one million dollars. Uh, the declaration was voted on on September twenty-seventh and approved by the said council on the ERA and the abatement. Uh, public notice was, uh, posted on October fifteenth of this, uh, confirmation notice of, uh, for the council. Uh, company representatives Casey Wright, Tate Schultz, and the representative Eric Dolphit are in attendance. Uh, they and myself are available for questions.
This, uh, this resolution is up for a public hearing this evening, so I'm going to open the floor for public hearing. Do Kevin, do we have any cards at this time?
We, we do not.
We do not. Why don't we give it just a brief sixty seconds and see if anyone calls in? Why don't we give it just a brief sixty seconds and see if anyone calls in? We'll close the public hearing at 7:50. Councilors, do you have any questions or comments regarding this resolution?
I just have one comment. I did vote against this prior. This is a confirmatory resolution, however, so I will be voting in favor of it. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? I would just make the one comment that I also voted against it initially, but as this is a confirmatory resolution, I will be voting for it too. Do I have a motion then to approve Resolution 21-125?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made by Scott Frye, seconded by Scott Willis. Cindy Gass, would you call the roll, please?
Joe Edwards.
Yes.
Scott Willis.
Yes.
Cindy Spaljerry.
Yes.
Jake Gilbert.
Yes.
Mike Johns.
Yes.
Scott Frye.
Yes.
Troy Patton.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Next item on our agenda, Resolution 21-132, declaring a certain area within the city of Westfield an economic revitalization area, qualifying certain real property improvements for tax abatement, and setting the time and place for a public hearing regarding the same. This had a resolution, had a council introduction on September 27, 2021. It is up for adoption consideration this evening, and I believe that Jim, well, Kai Chuck and Jim Ake will combine to represent the petitioner.
Yes, councilors. Again, Kai Chuck from Economic Development Department, I'm here to introduce the resolution, the resolution for establishing economic revitalization area and the tax abatement for real property for OrthoIndy. The ERA in question is approximately six acres at 251 East 71st Street, where an estimated 15,289-square-foot facility will be constructed with a value of $12.4 million. The abatement schedule is a ten-year schedule for real property at year one, starting at seventy percent, and then five percent increments till year 10, from seventy to twenty-five percent. The value, estimated value of this real property, excuse me, abatement is estimated at $1.2 million. It will create eight new jobs and retain fifteen new jobs, excuse me, fifteen existing jobs. Jim Ake is representing the petitioner. Both he and myself are available for questions.
Thank you, guys. For the record, my name is Jim Ake. I reside at 54543 Potomac Court in Westfield, Indiana. I'm here to represent and support OI's request to establish an economic revitalization area and to consider a new net real property tax abatement. Since council introduction in September, I received comments about the Surgery Center and wanting a guarantee that this will be built. Councilors, this project is a holistic and will be constructed in two phases, a holistic project in two phases. The main building will be built and opened in late '22 or early '23, depending on materials and, of course, the weather. Phase two is the Surgery Center, will likely be constructed in two to five years. OI is planning on this addition, and it is on the plan for the conceptual master development. The land was purchased with this in mind. There is no other practical use for the land and is specifically acquired for future medical use. It is also telling that Phase One building is designed to hospital standards, which parenthetically added 31.8 percent more cost to this project, and speaks to the intent to follow through on construction of the center. There are events beyond anyone's control that are unforeseen. Those could be another pandemic. It could be a depression. It could be a war. Those are highly unlikely. But the point is, it would be like asking you to guarantee that OI will see 10,000 patients at this location their first year. And, of course, I don't think you could do that. The empirical data says the center will be built. You also, as councilors, review all abatements approved for compliance each year. That's your safeguard and guarantee this will happen. Along with me tonight is Jimmy Clark with Cornerstone Companies Incorporated. Cornerstone is the developer and construction manager on this project, and I'd like to invite him up to make a few remarks, and then I'll come back and we'll open it up to questions for you guys. So I appreciate your time tonight, and I'd like to introduce Jimmy Clark.
Good evening. My name is Jimmy Clark. I'm the Vice President with Cornerstone Companies, based in Indianapolis. I wanted to provide a little bit more detail on the OrthoIndy project for you guys tonight. As Jim mentioned, OrthoIndy's Phase One is consistent of a 15,000-square-foot medical office building located at 250 East 175th Street. OI closed on the land and the construction loan for the project on October 15. The to-be-built one-story MOB will sit on approximately two acres, and the additional four-plus acres to the west are earmarked for potential ambulatory surgery center construction, ambulatory, of course, meaning care provided in the outpatient setting. There will be other future space needs likely for OI, as the Surgery Center will likely consist of two acres when it will be built down the road. Both the building and the land are owned by an LLC that consists of forty-five physicians employed by OrthoIndy, who have contributed their own capital as equity in the project. The MOB will be a relocation, of course, of OI's currently leased facility located at 17471 Wheeler Road. They will use approximately half of the 15,000-square-foot new facility for clinic space and the other half for licensed MRI and physical therapy space. In fact, OrthoIndy's hospital entity is the lessee for the licensed spaces, whereas the practice-level entity is the lessee for the clinic. The licensed spaces will be constructed to hospital standards, which comes with a significant cost premium for the project. The physicians in OI are committed to this location for the long term, which is why they have no issue bringing hospital-grade uses to an outpatient setting in Westfield. It's my belief that although specialized healthcare real estate assets are categorized as niche facilities, they've never been more valuable in the marketplace. The project was able to achieve an appraised value from a bank-selected appraiser of more than $650 a square foot, or about $10 million for the MOB. This is in part due to the specialized nature of OrthoIndy's service offerings and the premium location. In comparison to more standard medical clinic, be it a urgent care or primary care facility, in a similar location would likely not appraise above $500 a square foot. In closing, OrthoIndy is a nationally-recognized healthcare brand, orthopedic brand, excuse me, that sees the value in building a long-term facility in Westfield and being a lasting partner in the community. The need for a future Surgery Center onsite is a likely scenario, but the timing is still to be determined. Happy to answer any questions or comments from you guys as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Councilors, questions, comments?
I guess I will. I have shared my concerns with the petitioner's representative about this project, not specifically the project itself. I think that would be a nice addition to our community that we already have here, an expansion, if you will. However, abating a clinic, doctor's office, kind of, you know, use is not something we do typically, and I find it challenging to accept this one. So it is a slippery slope, and it's a highly valuable property with a known use that will be valuable here in the community. And it's hard, then, to establish an ERA, to do something that we already know is going to be successful. And I'm also troubled with this abatement schedule. I've been seeing this more lately, these creative abatement schedules. While I like uniqueness and when it makes sense, the five percent and how this is structured, going down even at year 10, still abating 25 percent, when normally that would not be, is not something I support. So I had to share my thoughts about that. This is also... I don't want to say I don't support this project, because I do. And again, I'd like to have in the community. Just this abatement is something I can't support.
I'd like to respond briefly. They offer services that aren't available currently in the marketplace. This is much more than an MOB. Not everything... You can classify vehicles as vehicles, but a car is very different than a semi-tractor trailer. They serve different purposes in the marketplace. They create economic energy. It's apples to oranges. Let me go through a couple of things. You received a comprehensive executive summary from me regarding our request tonight. I will include my remarks with a summary of OI's scope of services they bring to our community and the benefits we can receive. OrthoIndy will partner with other specialties and bring new jobs, increasing payroll to Westfield. They will provide a continuum of services to their patients in the Westfield community. They are a viable alternative to ER visits that are more time-consuming and much more costly. They will offer diagnostic imaging to include licensed MRIs, as Jimmy mentioned in his presentation, which now are sought elsewhere. The only other availability is the county hospital here. A lot of people have to travel down south and bypass our community to get the MRI services. They are open and available evening and weekend hours. That brings added service to our community that is much needed. They have orthopedic surgeons specializing in sports medicine available for immediate care. They also can follow up that immediate care with physical therapy. And here's something they offer, that they offer local businesses who are direct customers of OI's services through the care and treatment of workers' compensation injuries by providing these services locally that benefit the employer as well as the employee. OI coordinates care between the employer, employee, and insurance carriers, and getting them back on their feet and returning them back to the workforce, into the workforce with a quick return. They are in the early stages of programming Phase Two, which will consist of the ambulatory Surgery Center, and they have wellness community programming, like their 55 and older free education programs that focus on injury prevention and self-care. We are underserved in this marketplace for those services. They will bring additional convenience for our people, and some of the other benefits I'll just highlight. OI's new project and their expanded service will be an economic driver and add extreme value to our community. OI's project is an infill project. There are no costs to the city for improvements to their site. OI is nationally-recognized. It's a prestigious institution, which will, one, draw more patients to Westfield who will dine and shop here, fueling our economy. They will provide services to our residents who have to travel outside of Westfield for care. OI, the patient care model is shifting to outpatient services, as Jimmy mentioned, and OI will fill this need. OI is not in a TIF district, which benefits our schools. OI gives Sheridan and other communities to our north convenient and easy access to orthopedic care. OI is more affordable, we already talked about that. OI is a clean operation, pays high wages, and brings in new residents supporting local service businesses. It will generate other revenues to the city, including construction, payroll taxes, food and beverage taxes, and other service contracts, and will support our wellness initiative. OI will support local philanthropy through the OI Foundation and an aggressive employee donation match program. OI further supports our community as a member of the Westfield Chamber of Commerce. This is a growing industry, which currently is eighteen percent of our GDP and is expanding, and OI is here to meet the needs that currently exist in Westfield. It's apples to oranges comparison. One of the things they could do is move the Surgery Center somewhere else. They have facilities around the Dona Counties, and they've chosen to come to Westfield and expand here. I might mention that, too, the abatement schedule was based on your desire to have net new taxes considered. So they are not paying... Taken off the abatement schedule was the taxes they currently pay at their rented facility. So that's a plus. So, and then, so that complicates the abatement schedule, and that's reason for some of those inconsistencies. As to... I'll just add another comment, and then I'll throw it back to the council. OI is moving from a small leased location to a new building that they won. It has proven that keeping and adding companies to expand, to upgrade their existing businesses within our city is less costly and more effective than recruiting new employers or businesses to our area. So again, this is a win for our community. This is a plus for their return on investment that they will bring to the city with this facility and the visitors that will come. We also have to consider the large amount of people that come to Grand Park and need sports orthopedic services, and they have sports orthopedic specialists to serve this community. And their philanthropic effort here is much different than other organizations that would take part in just a standard medical building. So again, it's apples to oranges. So again, I ask for any further questions you might have.
I don't know that I have a question. I just want to make a statement. And Mr. Ake, I know I've discussed this with you, and I've shared with you that I'm wrestling with it, that I appreciate the fact that, obviously, the only thing we're looking at is abatement on additional square footage. I wrestle with moving one office to another office if there is no Phase Two. So again, barring any unforeseen drastic change in the economy, drastic change in circumstances, the expectation is sound and solid, two to five years, and we'll see a Surgery Center going up there. That's an absolute fair assessment.
I think that is, yes.
Jimmy, do you agree?
I agree.
So just to clarify, and maybe this is a question, Kai. So in terms of meeting the requirements for the abatement, three or four, five years from now, if we believe that they are not on track for the surgical center, which we understand could be market conditions, worldwide pandemics, any of that, we understand that there could be purposes behind, but if they are not on track for the surgical center, what would that look like for us as we approve, continue to approve the abatement process?
I believe if that's something that you're requesting, it have to be put into the resolution, this current resolution here. Is that correct, Manny?
Yeah, yeah, generally. I'm not... Is the net estimated value in the SB one, the $12,400,000?
That's only for this...
Phase one.
Phase one. Phase two...
Sure. Okay, I just want to clarify before I answer. Thanks. So Kai's right. If you wanted, as part of your lookback every July or June, as part of the SB one process, you could add in this resolution that you want to look at the progress report, basically, of this prediction. I think that'd be entirely appropriate. Been in SB one yet, because it's not a live project, but you could certainly say, okay, as part of the SB one process, understanding substantial compliance with declaring this area an ERA, give us a progress report. Is your prediction of three to five still live? Has it been pushed up, pushed back? Why or why not? I think that's a fair ask.
Yeah, so at the time of applying the abatement, we would request that update. And if there's no update... And if there's no update, or if it's not to your satisfaction, council satisfaction, then you could take action on the abatement.
So, in short, at that point, five years out, we hear that we're still, you know, three to five years out. At that point, it would be our prerogative to remove the tax abatement.
You wouldn't have the ability to remove the tax abatement because it's not based on the, the second phase? If you wanted to include a clawback provision or something like that, that's certainly something they can discuss. It would be within maybe a project agreement that's an addendum to, to this. Or you can do progress reports, which is, which is less severe. So, I mean, either way, there are, there are ways to, to kind of bind it, just whatever you're comfortable with and ultimately whatever the petitioner is comfortable with.
Mike, did I make one more comment here?
I might add that this OrthoIndy has been very successful and it's been found to be sort of a recession-proof entity. So, the odds are of, you've got 45 physicians investing in this. Now, that, that doesn't mean anything, but the healthcare industry is about 18% of the gross domestic product and incorporates an expand, ever-expanding globe, if you will. And the, that should give you some assurance, too, that these things will be needed and that this expansion will take place. They wouldn't have invested, you got the, can you put up the, the, the plan, the, the site plan? They wouldn't have put the future building there or bought the acreage they have, the six acres, if it wasn't going to happen. And they are just looking at how they would use that space right now and then other things will follow. So, the likelihood of this happening is pretty strong, regardless of the economy.
Jim, thank you. My, my thoughts on the matter is, first of all, our abatement process, as you know, it is an ongoing process. It's a learning process. And we've, we've talked about this, I think, perhaps in the last council meeting, but certainly a couple of times where we really need, as a city, to have a more formalized abatement process. This is something that I think will, will happen within, within the next, within the next six months, I'm hoping. I think that when I look at this, OrthoIndy is a, is a fantastic customer, fantastic member of our community. We would like them to remain in Westfield. The, the desire to have a surgery center at it is, is huge and, and highly desirable to, to myself and I believe to the city council and to all of Westfield. So, again, I'm, I'm a little, I feel bad at this point for the petitioner because we're kind of in the middle of, of an ongoing process of improvement that we're going to. But I think that we certainly value OrthoIndy. Having built and constructed buildings on property before, they were certainly going about it the right way for, to, to develop it with an addition in the very near future and a position properly on their property, in my opinion. I, I share some of the concerns that Councilman Spaljerik has, but I, I personally believe that this would be a tremendous addition to our city. So, with that, I would ask for a motion.
I move that we approve Resolution Number 21-132 with the stipulation that as part of the abatement process, we get a progress report on the surgical center once the completion of Phase One is finished and just that ongoing year after year.
I'd second that.
Okay, a motion, assuming that's acceptable.
Excuse me?
Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay, motion has been made by Councilman Gilbert, seconded by Councilman Fry. Cindy, would you please call the rule?
Yeah, Joe Edwards.
Yes.
Troy Patton.
Yes.
Jake Gilbert.
Yes.
Scott Willis.
Yes.
Cindy Spaljerik?
No.
Mike Johns?
Yes.
Scott Fry.
Yes.
Motion carries 6-1.
Thank you, counselors.
Mr. Johns, it probably makes sense to, to do it at the same time as your abatement review, the SB one review every June, right before July. That way, you can do whatever you want, but it just, it gives you some perspective of when to expect.
That does make sense.
Okay.
I agree. We can include that in the motion, I guess, that it be done at the same time.
We will be back before you in two weeks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Reed.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is Ordinance 21-46, approving Building Corporation authorizing execution of a lease, authorizing sale of certain real estate, and approving the issuance of bonds and related matters. This ordinance had a council introduction on October 11th. And hopefully Mr. Kai Bertrand is going to bring us up to date.
Counselors, no substantive changes at all from the time this was introduced. This is just part of the cadence of approval. This is related to the fire station project. On the team's call, I believe still is the bond counselor, Mr. Jim Crawford, who's very familiar with our community. And I'll yield the microphone to him just for a brief synopsis before you undertake your public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. We discussed this ordinance at your last meeting. Since that time, let me back up for a second. Back in September, you adopted a determination to incur indebtedness, a notice of which, with respect to this lease, was published in the newspapers, which started the running of a 30-day time period during which persons could request a petition or remonstrance process. That 30-day period expired on October 17th without any petition being filed. And so, we're now at the next step of, in a required public hearing concerning the lease before you approve the lease as part of this document. This lease will be for a maximum of 22 years. And the exact terms of the lease will entail with the bonds, when the bonds are sold in the beginning of December. And the lease payments will match up with the, the bond payments. At the, this is not a true lease, it's a financing lease, a capital lease, which means that at the conclusion of the lease, the property is turned over to the city for no, no charge. If it was a, an operating lease, that would not be the case. The Building Corporation is required to own the real estate, so there will be a transfer of the real estate pursuant to the statute, to the Building Corporation. And the amount of bonds that are being authorized is an amount, principal not to exceed $13,850,000. Statute requires that the council approve the issuance of the bonds by the Building Corporation, even though, oh, they're not being actually issued by the city because the members of the Building Corporation Board of Directors are appointed, not elected officials. So, when that occurs, the, the council has to give its approval for the financing also. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Before we ask any questions, this ordinance does require a public hearing. So, I will open the public hearing at 8:20. Kevin, Todd, do we have any, anybody wishing, any cards at this point?
No cards.
No cards, okay. Okay, we'll close the public hearing at 8:21. And counselors, do you have any questions or comments?
I have a few. Sorry, I'm going to be the pain in the butt tonight. Who exactly is on the Building Corporation now? Just so we can know.
You have Mr. Ronald Moore, Mr. Larry Clarino, and Mr. Steve Latour, all of which are present in the chamber this evening.
Okay, great. And have the appraisals been done that are mentioned in the documents?
I believe they have been received, the land appraisals? Osborne Park?
Yes. And, this is getting signed tomorrow for these documents?
Yeah, and Mr. Crawford could fill in the blanks there, that these documents do need to be executed by the city council and also by Building Corporation.
Okay, because I have one additional question. It talks about an, an addendum to the lease. And there's some kind of adjustment. And it says that it's occurring after the 26th.
I will yield to Mr. Crawford.
Correct.
It's Appendix I.
Yes, correct. The reason for executing the lease as, as soon as we can is that, that then requires us to put another notice in the newspaper stating that the lease has been executed and that starts another 30-day period during which someone can object to the execution of the lease. That gets us to just Thanksgiving week, which would mean, early as we could sell bonds would be the very beginning of December and close very beginning of December. We don't want to get too far into December because the, the rates tend to get swirly at the end of the year. So, we want to get that, that done. The reason for the addendum is that when the bonds are sold, the lease payments, as you know, the, the lease payments have a maximum in the lease of not to exceed $1.1 million per year. That's your, your basic lease payment. Once the bonds are sold, that lease payment will match up with the bond. So, if in a bond year, I don't have the schedules in front of me, maybe Greg or Charlie can chime in on that. But if, if, if the lease payments require $850,000 a year, that's what the lease payment will end up being.
So, that's what Appendix I really is, will have that number then? Because it's not in there now?
Correct. And what happened, what happens is the, the lease payment is rounded up to the nearest $1,000 in excess of what the bond payments are.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, counselors? Thank you, Counselors Spaljerik, for asking your questions. I had a couple of the same. That being the case, can I call for a motion to approve Ordinance 21-48 and adopt it?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
A motion made to adopt the ordinance by Councilman Spaljerik, seconded by Councilman Fry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Johns, I think he said 48 by mistake on the, on the list there.
Did I?
Forty-six.
Forty-six. I apologize.
No, no, no problem.
Skip it down here. Okay. Ordinance 21-46. Cindy, would you please call the rule?
Cindy Spaljerik?
Yes.
Scott Willis?
Yes.
Jake Gilbert?
Yes.
Mike Johns?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Troy Patton? Troy Patton?
Yes.
Scott Fry?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. As previously noted, Ordinance 21-48 is, has been postponed until our next meeting on November 8th. Ordinance 21-42, additional appropriation of funds, is not on the, not officially up on the, for vote this evening. It appears on tonight's agenda for purposes of discussion only. It appears as a reminder that the city council, by statute, does not have to pay any expenses outside of the budget. Westfield has approved, an approved budget for 2021. It was duly filed with the state. If the administration needs to exceed the budget amount, is required to ask the city council to approve and appropriate the additional expense. This is, this is the rules of the state and statutes of Indiana. As we know, the administration did in fact exceed the budget. The administration did advise, did not advise the city council in advance or prior to exceeding the budget. The city council was left to discover the overage on its own and raise the issue. The city council reviewed Ordinance 21-41 as submitted on October 11th, 2021. The ordinance was tabled. The city council has since asked the administration to provide an updated appropriation amount to include total year-to-date expenses for both the administration and the clerk's office. The city council expects to see a revised 2041 ordinance back for public hearing and adoption consideration on November 8th. At that time, it will be up to the city council to approve the ordinance, deny the ordinance, or decide which specific expenses to pay. In addition, at this time, I would like to entertain a motion that the administration and the clerk's office immediately cease any ongoing or proposed litigation activities and that further, no additional legal fees, with the exception of the monthly retainer fees incurred after this date between these parties, will be paid by the city council.
Couple of points, Mr. Johns. Number one, the ordinance, updated ordinance was sent over by John Rogers early this afternoon. I think the clerk had some issues.
Actually, actually, the ordinance was received at 5:13 this evening, after which time the clerk's office was already closed.
1:44.
It went to Jim.
And second, this council cannot direct, other than clerk, I'll let her lawyer speak to that, or certainly the mayor to, to do anything. There's a separation of powers issue that Indiana Constitution requires that we follow and you can't direct the mayor to take certain actions.
We're simply, we're simply asking for a motion to cease the spending, legal spending.
Well, a motion predisposes a vote, which vote would be illegal. Move as you wish.
Okay. Andy, did you have a comment on that, please?
So, I do have a comment. I agree in part with Mr. Herschek and I do not agree in part with Mr. Herschek. You cannot require the two other entities to cease their litigation. You can, by resolution, express to them your desire that it be ceased. If that is what you had requested, that you can do. It does not require either one of them to essentially take your advisement.
I'm saying that. Can I have a motion?
In light of the commentary there, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we immediately, from this, from this point forward, stop paying for the litigation back and forth between the administration and clerk treasurer's office and that the city council no longer approve any further expenditures for those
I'll second that. Troy Patton?
I have a motion made and a motion seconded. Cindy Gass, would you please call the rule?
I, I've got a question, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I apologize, I'm a bit confused. So, we're voting on exactly what? Are we voting to appropriate the funds but no longer suppo, I'm confused. Can somebody break it down demi-style for me? That would be great. That would be great.
Yeah. We're, we're, we're voting basically saying that we're not going to approve any future spending for ongoing, for litigation that's only costing the taxpayers money and bringing nothing new or anything positive to the city.
From this day forward, from this day forward, correct, Mike?
Yeah.
From this day forward.
And this hasn't really, the appropriation is not the issue right? This is just from this day forward, we're not going to continue to incur.
Appropriation will be a second issue that we'll handle on, on November eighth.
Got it, thank you, appreciate it.
Cindy, would you, Gass, would you please call a rule?
I have Joe Edwards.
Yes.
Scott Willis.
Yes.
Cindy Spoljerik.
Yes.
Jake Gilbert.
Yes.
Mike Johns.
Yes.
Scott Frye.
Yes.
Troy Patton.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
The next item on our agenda is moving into the new business. New business, ordinance twenty-one dash four-four, Landing One Sixty-One PUD. It has a council introduction this evening, followed by APC hearing on November first, APC recommendation on December sixth, and back to the council for consideration on December thirteenth. And I believe that Caleb Ernest is going to introduce this PUD.
Actually, the petitioner is going to introduce this proposal, so, Mr. Dobbs Shewitz.
Thank you and good evening, members of the city council. For the record, my name is John Dobbs Shewitz, and I'm a land use professional with the law firm, Nelson &amp; Frankenberger. We represent the petitioner, Lennar Homes of Indiana, and present tonight on behalf of Lennar is Keith Lash, as well as Jim Shin, who are an attorney with our office. As noted, the matter before you this evening is the introduction of the Landing One Sixty-One PUD and corresponding commercial and townhome community. The subject, real estate, is highlighted on the aerial image now on display. Lennar is pleased to present its plans for Landing One Sixty-One, a new forty-acre-plus mixed-use development directly north of One Hundred and Sixty-First Street, west of US-31 and east of the Monon Trail, as illustrated here on this aerial. Today, the zoning of the real estate is shown at the top corner of the exhibit. Is S2 residential per the terms of the Indianapolis Hebrew Congregation PUD and enclosed industrial to the north of that, the area highlighted in gray, which zoning classification and available infrastructure do not match up with the ability to provide commercial and office opportunities along US-31 or the benefit of residential opportunities along the Monon. The Landing One Sixty-One development is planned to include a mix of commercial and residential uses that will include a destination experience along the Monon Trail and US-31. The intent of the development is to create a village-style community with townhomes that border the Monon Trail, with pedestrian connectivity and open space areas that connect to the commercial and office uses to the east along US-31. The vision for the site has been to create a Westfield destination along the Monon Trail. The location of the Monon Trail and the intersection of US-31 and One Hundred and Sixty-First Street offers a unique opportunity to create this village, featuring a mix of commercial, retail, office, and for-sale townhomes in a genuine work, live, and recreate experience. Lennar's ideal vision is for a project which evolves into a center for business innovation with a combination of corporate and medical office, as well as opportunities for small businesses. The plan on the left, council members to your left on the screen, this is the original plan that we vetted and met with several council members to discuss, and it's been revised. This updated plan, the plan on the right, illustrates no residential uses along US-31, so the visibility of uses along the corridor will be commercial and office. As a result, the number of townhomes on the proposed plan has been reduced to one hundred and forty, where that space along US-31 would no longer include residential or assisted living as permitted uses. Assisted living was contemplated under the original plan to the north into the site right here, where it's been revised to be exclusively commercial and office. Additionally, the plan includes the extension of Dean Road. Dean Road is the name of the street that parallels US-31, heading south off of David Brown, and terminates in a cul-de-sac today, right here at this location. So the plan would include the extension of that road network down here to One Hundred and Sixty-First Street at the existing north leg of the roundabout, which serves exclusively the cemetery today. This extension of infrastructure will split the area that today is too large to support office development into several smaller blocks, all of which would be permit-ready, which is critical in attracting office development. Lennar's objective is to work with the city leadership to define the uses that are believed would be an asset to the community and potentially an amenity for the area. Lennar can then set the stage with infrastructure and amenities to attract the highest level of development on the site. As illustrated, the plans will include significant pedestrian connections to the Monon. These connections are proposed, which will encourage public use and assist the creation of a destination for trail users, as well as opportunities for public art, gathering spaces, and recreational elements lacking along the trail today. Lennar's objective is to incorporate the Monon Trail into the community to create a hub of the Monon Trail that these three gateways will seem inviting and encourage people off the trail today, where there's no opportunities that exist for interaction throughout the site. Pedestrian connectivity is a key feature and critical element in attracting the highest level of development on the site. These next two exhibits provide some context for the benefit of the discussion with the planning commission and council. These are photographs of buildings along the US Highway Thirty-One corridor with their acreages and square footages. This data is provided to identify that the typical site location along the corridor includes three-to-five-story buildings with heights, excuse me, three-to-five-story building heights and square footages between sixty and a hundred thousand square foot typically, on parcels ranging in size from four to twelve acres. This is another exhibit illustrating the same thing, providing the data on the building square footages, heights, and property sizes. Character photos providing examples as well of townhomes and their architecture are provided. The proposed townhomes, again, will be limited to the area north of the cemetery, next to the Monon, as a transition between the more intense development along Thirty-One and the cemetery to the south and the Monon to the west. A sensitive lower-impact residential use adjacent to the Hebrew Congregation Cemetery is strongly perverted and appropriate in the context of the surrounding uses. Anticipated home values in that area will be between three hundred, the mid-three hundreds and low four hundred thousands for a for-sale townhome product. This block diagram is a connection to the illustrations that we used on the commercial side, and the exhibit displays and identifies the various sizes of these parcels that are at play. Again, we provided those photographs of the commercial and office uses with square footages. And as noted here, this area where it would be exclusively commercial and office uses is twelve acres. This ten-acre parcel is split in half. There would be no commercial on the east half, but rather, excuse me, on the west half, rather, there would be townhomes, and approximately half of that, five acres, would be commercial uses, office uses on the six acres to the north, those would be office uses. And as noted previously, advancing the overall proposal at this time provides for the extension of Dean Road and necessary infrastructure to serve appropriately-sized parcels, which would include commercial uses along Thirty-One. This is an opportunity to work together now to design a project which we all believe will be a long-term asset to the community in making available opportunities for office development which don't exist today. To this end, the capacity of office development that we anticipate making shovel-ready would include approximately twenty-three acres and adequate real estate for surface parking and buildings in excess of two hundred and fifty thousand square feet, approximately three hundred thousand square feet. In conclusion, this proposal presents an opportunity to bring three parcels together, which would unlikely develop independently today. It would result in the construction of the extension of Dean Road from One Hundred and Sixty-First Street up to David Brown, and provide building-ready sites for as much as three hundred thousand square feet of office development along US-31 and upscale townhomes along the Monon. Lennar would very much appreciate feedback from the city council on the proposal as they advanced the planning commission. This request is scheduled for a public hearing with the planning commission, after which we'll work with staff on making adjustments and modifying based on comments we receive. But that public hearing is scheduled for November first. And additionally, we have a neighborhood meeting scheduled for tomorrow evening to give those residents who had also received notice of the planning commission public hearing an opportunity to review the information and become more informed before the public hearing in front of the planning commission. With that, I would conclude, be glad to receive the planning commission, excuse me, the council's comments at this time, as well as throughout the process. Thank you.
This is Troy Patton. I just have a real quick comment. There are aspects of this I like. I, I mean, I think I've spoke to a couple of people on this, but there's some things I don't care for. And, and one of the things is, you know, and I don't, and maybe it's the only best use of this property, I, I don't know. But as we keep, as I keep getting more and more presentations, it, I, I keep hearing the use of, you know, maximizing the development or the, the development of the property, which typically means cram as many people as we can into one area. And we already have issues at One Hundred and Sixty-First, and, and I know it's not Lennar's issue, I mean, but, you know, as, you know, we should have made the developer on the south side contribute to a tunnel and, and things like that. This will only exacerbate that same problem. So that's just, that's just my two cents worth of thanks.
Any other comments, guys?
John, thanks for the, the update since we met. So I like it better. Couple of questions. So you use the term linear trail park. So when we hear the term park, are we talking about, Westfield is in control of the upkeep and maintenance of this park, or Lennar is? Who is maintaining the linear trail parks on that?
The, the area that's not along the Monon would be maintained by an owners' association, which includes the residential and commercial components of the project.
But yet you say they would be for public use.
They would have a public easement that would overtop them, which would allow the general public to use those spaces.
Okay. And then, any more thoughts in section? I don't know, do you have these labeled A, B, or C? But the ten-acre that's split, the second from the north, I know we had talked about in our meeting, moving the townhomes, swapping the townhomes and the retention drainage there to move the townhomes farther away from Thirty-One, just for, if nothing else, for the noise of the people who live there, but then also to increase the value of the townhomes by being closer to the trail. What was the reasoning behind that again?
Well, the, today it's for the purposes of identifying the most appropriate location for detention. That doesn't mean detention can't be provided in other locations, but we're still exploring that comment that you provided. The, the area, this acreage up here, the six acres to the north, was previously identified as an opportunity potentially for assisted living, and we've removed that from consideration. And then, this area here was also an area of forty additional townhomes, and we've removed those townhomes in favor of exclusively commercial development.
Those are parts I like, thank you. That, I like that better. I'm asking specifically about the retention, right there to the west, and the townhomes flipping to gain space between the uses, to move the townhomes farther away from Thirty-One for noise purposes, and then also to move them closer to the Monon for value, because I think that's something that people are absolutely looking for.
We'll continue to work on that and see if we can accommodate that requirement.
And then, while I'm at it, so if that were to happen, in terms of this idea to serve our trail users and provide this park, I, I like that concept. In this development, the horizontal nature of the linear park, obviously, they have to really turn to get off of the Monon to use some of the things, but maybe that concept would better serve trail users, as I know in that, for example, that the pictures that you show, you step off of the park, or off of the Monon there in Carmel, like, ten feet, and you're on some of those side parks. So would it be a better use if they ran north-south instead of east-west in terms of users really taking advantage of those things? We did not talk about that when we met, but I'm just sharing those comments now, something.
We, we can take a look at both, and perhaps it's a full loop. It's east-west and north-south that creates a circuit where we loop through and, and it's provided, there, there is connectivity in several locations, but it's typically by sidewalk through those three east-west connectors. But that doesn't mean we can't do an enhanced sidewalk and other elements to find some location between those connectors to tie them back into one another, so it's a north-south connection.
And to be clear, just, so you are saying you will pay for Dean Road in the extension here, or you're saying?
Yeah, we're, we're not, we're not seeking any TIF dollars through an agreement with the city to construct that roadway.
Just wanted to clarify on that. Thank you.
Have any comments, councilors?
I just wanted to make a basic comment. One Hundred and Sixty-First is primary arterial land, and US-31, obviously, we understand that. This is one of our most significant pieces of property in the city, given its location. We have our Thirty-One overlay, which is still in the process of being updated, but as you know, building massing and uses are incredibly important. We only have so many opportunities along our corridor there, and especially at a, at a primary like that. So for me to consider so much housing at a location like that is not a good option. And I realize that we have the Monon there, and people want to live along the Monon, and so it makes it tricky, a lot like the issue we have with SEP, and given their existing conditions. I don't, I don't want to see this parcel developed out less than its potential. So that is concerning. When I see this amount of townhomes, that concerns me. I realize you've included pictures of office buildings and things like that, however, your land uses that you've included as permitted are, are all over the place, garden center, daycare, you know, the...
And, and those are being revised along with the maps that we've shown you this evening?
Yeah. I mean, I'm talking large-scale office buildings, major employment generator kind of things, not townhomes and retail. So personally, that's just something that I, over the years, have realized from our overlay people are expecting. Thanks.
John, I guess I would follow up and piggyback on top of what Cindy said, but probably not as nice or polite as she said it. I think I was pretty open with you in our conversations. I think this is a wonderful development. I like the, I like the parks. I just believe it should be on the west side of the Monon. This particular piece of property, this, this is, this is one of the last great pieces of property that we in Westfield have. As you drive north through corporate America as envisioned in Carmel, I kind of have the same vision going north through Westfield. This is our front door. This is an opportunity to have... This is an opportunity to have large office buildings and corporate headquarters where they can be showcased along Route thirty-one. That's my vision, my personal vision of what I'd see Westfield like in the future. And I think we've already started on the north end of Westfield with Baxter and the Abbott folks up there. That's, that's a vision I think we need to carry through. I think we're selling ourselves short by doing this. I appreciate you adding the photos, the pictures of the office buildings, which you really didn't have before, and because that's what I, I vision on that property, but I suspect that what's going to happen is we're going to build the townhouses right away, and all we're going to do is add more people, more townhouses, and we're going to give up the one thing that we have. In, in my opinion, if we hold fire, okay, economic development is coming. We will see office buildings. There's a, it's, it's a, it's a pendulum, okay? And right now, the pendulum has swung so far to the one side, it says everyone's going to work at home. Well, I truly believe that that pendulum's going to swing back, and when it swings back, we're going to be sitting here going, where's our land for office buildings? Well, we've used it, we've, we've put townhouses on it. And so, John, I, I just, my own opinion, I don't support this project in this location.
Appreciate your comments.
But I will inform the APC.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? No other comments? Thank you.
Thanks for your time this evening.
Next item on the agenda, ordinance twenty-one dash forty-nine, twenty-two, non-elected salaries, wages, benefits, stipends, and other compensation for the twenty-two calendar. It has a council introduction this evening. Based upon how that introduction goes, in the past, we have, we have set aside our rules and, and voted to approve these ordinances at the same time, but at this point, I'll open the floor to Todd Bertrand to discuss this.
Members of council, this is the annual exercise pursuant to statute that enables employees to be paid predicated on the budget you've already passed, so there's no substantive differences between this instrument and the overarching budget itself. All those numbers are represented in, in the operational budget, so this is, again, just an annual exercise. Is there another link to that? That enables the clerk to execute salaries and payroll, as well as the wages and benefits and stipends. Happy to entertain your questions. And I forget, what's the deadline on that, Madam Clerk?
The first.
The first.
We can, I mean, we can push it a little bit further if we need to, because of all the trouble we've had with the budget, it'd be okay, but if you can, do it tonight.
What exact changes are we looking at from last year?
Changes? If there are any positions that department heads need to create with existing, sorry, existing staff, in the budget itself, it represents a four percent increase overall. That is, would essentially be a pool of money, directors would then allocate those monies based on performance, and if you look at the Archer report, that's our guiding principle on how salaries are distributed. So, if there is a new position that has been requested, that is then supported by the survey that, and I know earlier this summer I provided you all with links to the background of how that Archer study is, is, the data is collected and their methodology. So, there's really no substantive changes, again, this mirrored to the budget itself.
Okay, I see stuff like the Grand Junction Plaza Coordinator position has been added, starts at fifty-two thousand a year.
So, you're not, those are in there, but not necessarily funded. If you recall, we'll create those positions, but if they're not funded within that, or have the financial capacity to support that, they're in there in the event that the director finds the ability to do that. Because if not, we have to come back to you every position that would be created otherwise throughout the twelve months.
This is just, just a general question, I know this is the way we've done it for years. Why do we not do bi-weekly pay for our salary ordinance? Every other community, every other community seems to do that locally.
It would be much easier to do that.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Why, why do we do annual salaries instead of the bi-weekly salary ordinance?
Are you referring to the number of pays? The paid, like, twenty-six pays versus twenty-four?
No, the way, the way that we do our pay, and so, I mean, instead of having the one annual pay, you know, it's four-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-two bi-weekly, you know? And every other community around seems to do it that way. And they also use categories, and most don't use the men midpoint and max.
Well, I'm unaware of what other communities are doing, but for, I will tell you, the Archer report is, is an analysis of other public entities, cities, not the least of which have been surveyed, most notably Carmel to our south, but beyond that, I'm not familiar with what other communities do. This is a pretty straightforward template, it gives that latitude across an X and Y axis for midpoint, low, mean, and high. We've never, if you recall, we've never had that before, it's been very arbitrary, and it actually opens us up to subjectivity and certain biases, I'll put it that way.
I just noticed our, our other communities around do not do it the way we do, so it's kind of confusing to know that we do it differently, and I don't know that it makes sense sometimes.
Well, I would suggest if you have a different methodology for twenty-twenty-three, given where we're at in this calendar for the twenty-two cycle, we'd certainly entertain those, those suggestions or recommendations and find a blend.
We would still have to have, like, the, the amounts, like, in between, like, a three-thousand dollars to four-thousand dollar bi-weekly, so at the end of the year, it would still whatever was budgeted, so you'd still have to have a range, but it, it would still be bi-weekly.
I'd ask up one other question. Are there major changes to benefits in here?
We're not adding any benefits. If you recall, the only real change, which really was a monetary gain overall, sort of cost savings, is our health insurance renewal, was predicated or planned in the budget, approximately twelve percent, came back as a nine percent, so beyond the overall elements in our benefits portfolio, nothing has changed, sir.
But they do, they do cost us something if they do change, and...
They do.
We should be aware of that.
And those are all captured. I think the per fund sends out an analysis early in the year as to if there's any change to the employer contribution, any change in that percentage. The deferred compensation, four-fifty-seven, that's been that, that allocation of money purchased for well over twenty years, so there's been no substantive changes to, to benefits.
But all the changes are positive for us, for the city.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, Congress? Procedurally, if we would like to adopt this ordinance this evening, we have to waive our, our policy and procedures, is that correct?
Suspend the rules.
First motion, just suspend the rules.
Suspend.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Second, okay. Motion's been made by Scott Fry, seconded by Joe Edwards to suspend the rules.
Okay.
Cindy Gass, call the roll, please.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Scott Willis?
Yes.
Cindy Spaljeric?
Yes.
Jake Gilbert?
Yes.
Mike Johns?
Yes.
Scott Fry?
Yes.
Troy Patton?
Yes.
Motion carries seven-zero to suspend the rules.
Okay. That, that being the case, do I have a motion to approve and adopt ordinance twenty-one dash forty-nine?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Scott Fry, seconded, I think, by Troy Patton. Cindy, would you call the roll, please?
Jake Gilbert?
Yes.
Cindy Spaljeric?
Yes.
Mike Johns?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Scott Willis?
Yes.
Troy Patton?
Yes.
Scott Fry?
Yes.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda, resolution twenty-one dash one-three-five, approving equipment lease financing up for adoption consideration this evening. I know who's going to present this, finance?
Wasn't that one that was removed from the agenda?
Not to my knowledge.
Oh, okay.
Equipment lease financing was on my agenda.
This was added, I believe, Mr. John, you said at the beginning. It frontloads the approval process for entering into the, eventually a master lease for the fire apparatus and related equipment in a not-to-exceed amount of two-point-three million, and essentially with subsequent council approval and, and look back, as it says in, in section three and four, it essentially gives the mayor the authority to enter into, negotiate that lease to get the best rates, and frontloading it, as Mr. Crawford mentioned earlier, gives the ability for the city to take advantage of the good rates now while they're, while they're active.
Okay. Hi. I read through this, I didn't really see anything unusual. Counselors, any comments?
Hey, this is Troy Patton, one really quick question, sorry about that. Hey, Todd, I, I'm guessing that we've already factored in the lease payments into our budget, correct?
Yeah, that, that was presented last Tuesday, so we're contemplating those monies be embedded in what ultimately will be the fire budget, so this instrument enables the mayor, his designee, to financially obligate the city under the terms of those leases.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty-one dash one-three-five?
So moved.
Second.
Second, that.
Motion made by Jake Gilbert, seconded by Scott Fry. Cindy, would you call the roll, please?
Uh, Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Scott Willis?
Yes.
Troy Patton?
Yes.
Scott Fry?
Yes.
Mike Johns?
Yes.
Jake Gilbert?
Yes.
Cindy Spaljeric?
Yes.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Next item on the agenda is, do we have any residents who wish to address the City Council this evening?
I have one card at the moment. Birch Dalton?
First of all, I'm going to make a few points about the audit, but I want to thank you for your service, both to the council and the mayor, and I wasn't planning on making any comments tonight until my name came up in this audit. And first of all, you know, I believe in the audit, it, I'm sure these reputable firms wouldn't risk their reputation on doing something improper over something in the city of Westfield, but I would like to see it posted immediately, so we all can read it, not just y'all up there. And I want to address a couple of issues. He said emails between Mr. Dalton and Mr. Bertrand, and I'm going to give you the real story. You know, Pro-X came to Westfield not because of him or anybody, it came here because of me. Phil Thatcher, Joe's father, and I played basketball together in the seventies, went to the same middle school. They were going to put it in Kokomo. I'm the one that says, why wouldn't you go to Grant Park? You know, but obviously, the audit, newspaper, you guys don't know this, so I'm the one that brought it here, all right? And I can tell you, it was harder because he was the nephew of that man, you know? We didn't get impact fees, we didn't get a TIF, we pay all our taxes, and, you know, we bid it out just like anybody else, so I'm going to call BS on this guy for not adding that. He should have called me instead of just using my frickin' name, and I will find that guy and talk to him. So, clear the air on that one. Now, let's talk about Grant Park and Ken Coker. You know, there was a day that, you know, people, men, women, could do a verbal agreement, and that was it. You know, your word was gold. Apparently, no disrespect to the attorneys in the room, you know, everybody wants to write shit down and then hold you to it when you didn't cross that T exactly. Mr. Coker's the most honorable man I've ever met, and to puke that guy is wrong, wrong. It's ridiculous what's going on here. There's enough pressure out here in this world because of COVID, you guys just don't understand, and you guys are fighting over this stuff. Let's put an end to it. You know, the fact you're taking the money out of the deal not to pay attorney, probably a good thing. No money, they'll, they'll quit doing it, you know? Normally, in a sane market, you know, people resolve issues between themselves, but to puke Ken Coker and Mr. Cook over Joe Thatcher being his nephew is wrong, and I can assure you, Mr. Bertrand does not show me any favoritism, and I, you know, it's been over a year where he wouldn't even talk to me. So, you know, some of the stuff that's being said is bullshit, no, thank you.
Thanks, Birch. Any other comments?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I also want to talk on the audit. I'm Bev Rollings. I'm payroll specialist for the clerk treasurer's office, and I want to talk about the allegations of, by BKD of not giving them information in a timely manner. We work with auditors every year, and it is our responsibility to give the information in a timely manner. I, for one, and I know that the other girls in the office also, but I being the payroll specialist, I'm working with ADP, I had BKD come to me and want, like, yearly information from seventeen to twenty. So, I gave them our master files. They came back weeks, a couple weeks later, I don't know time-wise, and said, this is not the information we need, we need another form of information, okay? It's like, what do you want me to give you? So, I went back to my account specialist, my ADP account specialist, and I said, okay, they're wanting this whole big thing. We tried to get a PDF form, but the stuff was too large, so I had to tell them, okay, we have to do it in a zip drive. So, we zip-drived all the yearly information for the four years, three, four years, and sent it to BKD. They came back to me a few weeks later and said, this is not what we need, we need it in a different form, you need to give it to us in an Excel form. Excel form, these are final reports for the year. Why do you need it in an Excel form? Questions in my head rolling around, so I contacted my account manager again and said they wanted an Excel form, and she, the same thing, was, why Excel? Excel can be manipulated. She said, we don't have anything out there for you in an Excel form, but I have to talk to my managers, my stuff, we're going to have to figure out how we can do this for you. So, it took her a while to figure out, and ADP specifically, on how to do these final yearly reports in Excel spreadsheet form for BKD. They came back again, and they said, okay, we can send this to them, so I sent them the form. A few months later, I get BKD again, asking me for the same information that I have given them over and over and over again, and I'm not the only one in the office that that's happened to, and I'm not the only one in the city that that's happened to either, because we heard from other departments in the city that... that said BKD did the same thing with them. So it's not us that have put this off and made this last forever. It's BKD that's been putting this off and putting this off and putting this off.
Um, I would like to say that Dan Haddon had brought up the fact that everybody, employees and departments needed to be treated fairly. The six of us in our office feel that we're not treated fair. We, and the fact that they brought up a, the fact, we used a city vehicle one time to go to a city conference, a state board of accounts conference. Other employees you see the vi- city vehicles all the time. The, uh, the city pays for employees to go to Vegas and Disney. But we were questioned about a state board class because a couple of the girls in the office went on a personal vacation around that same time. They have a receipt for that. But the fact that we were questioned and accused, we, sorry, I'm not good at public speaking. Um, the city has a, had a kind of Facebook account for city employees. Our office was blocked from that. Our office was blocked from all employee emails. Our office was blocked from doing, to view the virtual city all employee meetings. Um, a lot of our jobs require responses from other departments. A lot of times, we email asking, we, this is part of our job. We have, we need your response to get our job done. Our response, our emails go unanswered. We, during COVID, the other city offices were closed. We were still there, making sure city bills were getting paid, payroll was done. But yet, our office is the one, honestly, we feel bullied a lot. And I just want you to know that you council members that have come in, cared enough to come into our office to see what we do and the hurdles that we face, we really appreciate you.
Hi, Kim String, records manager for the clerk treasurer's office. I would just like to say to y'all, if you think my job's fun, it's not. It used to be. I used to enjoy my job 100% until this started. To do my job, quite frankly, is very difficult. I have to prepare this agenda. I can't communicate with department heads. They can't communicate with me. Public hearings, who's supposed to notice them? Always before that came from the city attorney. I, he would write them, tell me to publish it. I would publish it. Here you go. You're good to go. This is not fun. And to have my employer accuse us of taking a city vehicle, that's ludicrous and, quite honestly, very offensive. I have documentation from the rental car company that I can show you right here and now. That was in May. Our conference was in June. And if the fleet manager doesn't have an honest record or a up-to-date record of that, I think that needs to be addressed. Internal control's right there. Something needs to happen. He needs to know when this, we rented, or took this vehicle out one time for a conference. We have papers to prove that we were at that conference. As far as record destruction, I have proof. When I started in 2013, it wasn't done. But yearly, not yearly, I'm, not yearly, but we have the opportunity yearly to do that, to submit records to be destroyed. During COVID, we did not. Next year, we submitted the papers. It was approved and the process started. So, quite frankly, it's just not a good environment to work in, and I don't enjoy my job.
Judy Stanley shot 209 West Main Street, Westfield, Indiana. I want to give kudos to Cindy Gossett and her staff and her office for these past few years. Having a, an accounting, government accounting background. I've been in several clerk treasurer's office over the state of Indiana. And I know that they're doing their job, and they're doing a great job. Otherwise, you would hear from the state board of accounts. Um, anyway, thank you, Cindy, and thank you, staff, for doing your job. And thank you, councilors, for supporting everything.
Kevin, do we have any additional comments?
No, we do not.
Thank you. Uh, we'll move on next to the clerk treasurer's comments.
Um, I do have, and, excuse me, I want to apologize to council for my outburst earlier, but it was very, very difficult to sit here. Oh, it was very, very difficult to sit here as, as it was for my staff and listen to all of that and not be able to respond, because we know the truth of it. We have our timeline, and that's what I said, I'd be interested to see theirs. But in light of the additional appropriation request for legal and consulting fees, it's been stated by the administration and the review team that the clerk's office is to blame for the delay and the cost of the review and the amount of money spent on legal fees. In response, I wanted to take a few moments and acknowledge my staff. It's never been easy working in the clerk's office, especially over the past year. And I want to thank each and every one of them. We're missing Misha tonight. But each and every one of them for all their hard work. As you can see, it's really difficult, especially during this time. The city has gone through two reviews with state board of accounts this year. Around the same time as the state board of accounts reviews, the mayor appointed his own review team, which has been going on now for over a year. My staff has had to deal with three lawsuits brought by the mayor just this year. My staff has had to work under the constant stress of trying to work while at the same time worrying about causing another baseless lawsuit being brought against my office, example, destroying the boxes. Just this month, as my staff is trying to work on the budget, they're receiving notices that TAF plans on deposing them in pending litigation. In short, my staff has to deal with constant stresses and anxieties in responding to requests from the review team and worrying about whether or not their actions may result in yet another lawsuit against m- myself or my office. Further, more mold was recently found in our office, and since we can't work remotely during, uh, uh, remotely, excuse me, to not currently having laptops, this has caused additional stress and strain on my office. Just today, my staff came into the office anyway to make sure every city employee got their paycheck. No person should have to work under these conditions. But I wanted to say thank you to my staff for all your hard work and commitment to the city of Westfield. Also, I felt it would be helpful for the council to see a detailed timeline of the, of the events which I've provided surrounding the review and the continuous lawsuits that's been filed. Upon review of this timeline, it's my belief that you will agree that my office has been responsive and cooperative with the review and that the lawsuits by the mayor against me and my office have been unnecessary and wasteful expenditures of city resources. If the council has any questions or want to see any supporting documentation, please let me know. That's all I have for now.
Thank you, Cindy.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Comments from s- city councilors? Cindy, go ahead.
Uh, the APC did meet on, um, October 18th. Very short. We only had three detailed development plan approvals, and one was for Rockefeller's at 32 and Darton, Midland South, and the citizens booster pump and ground storage tank in the Legacy Oaks PUD. Um, I would like to say, too, that the ARPA committee that was scheduled was canceled. Um, this past week, we found out that there is legislation that is moving, uh, I think it passed now through Senate, it's now through the House, I believe, um, that might open up the uses for ARPA a little bit more. And so we wanted to hold off and wait to see what that brings before we move any further, uh, given that pending, um, legislation. And one more thing. Um, our Westfield pride, the pride of Westfield. I am proud of them because they got their Scholastic A state champion status. So congratulations to them. They have put in an incredible, incredible season worth of work, and it's a big deal for them to get that, so.
All right. Okay. Do I have anything from the Oversight Committee? Comments from the Finance Committee?
Uh, no, we'll, we will have a meeting next week, um, and we'll try to address maybe some of the things in these letters.
Thank you, Troy. Jake, do you have any comments?
I would just like to tell the residents, you know, we hear a lot about, I mean, obviously there's a lot of pain here tonight, right? One of the best cities in the entire universe, um, people hurting. We know, um, you know, that we, up here, we, we try to find wisdom and discernment. We know that things are never as good or as bad as they seem. Sometimes when you sit in the audience, um, I, I could completely understand what this may appear like at times. When there's a lack of communication, negativity always fills in. Unfortunately, in the current status quo, we, we found ourselves in a situation where really the only communication that can take place is from lawyer to lawyer. And, um, these are fine people. Um, but when, when people don't talk to each other, you get results like this. And everybody says, exactly, why won't they talk to me? Um, I would like for you to know, a lot of times, we, we don't gush up here about the efforts that have been made behind the scenes or so forth and so on. And so therefore, people assume that nothing has been done. But there have been great efforts by lots and lots of people to restore. And maybe it appears tonight that, well, they have not worked, and I can understand that. Sometimes, um, we're in unique situations which require unique solutions. Uh, tonight, with the resolution passed, it's a act of desperation for us to say, man, let's get this together. So, um, I just hope and pray that the public doesn't lose faith in us. We are trying. I'm not saying that we get it right all the time. But we are trying, uh, to improve the situation. If you want to talk or have suggestions, that's, we are elected officials, and therefore it's our job is to listen to you. Um, but I, I appreciate the people who have concern. I, I would rather it be that way, that people care enough to have concern, even those of you that rip my butt. Um, it's perhaps warranted, but I, I at least appreciate that you love the city. Um, I hated to see some of the pain that was up here tonight. And I hate to see us, uh, have to fight and bring in people from the outside to help us solve it. I believe there's enough human potential right here to solve it. But we have to communicate and talk, or else it will not change. And we have to talk with each other, not, not through representatives. Um, so, not sure if I made a point there or not, but, um, I appreciate the work of the council and, um, the mayor and the clerk treasurer, and I remain positive and optimistic that it will get better soon. Thank you.
Uh, in my remarks, I would echo what Jake has just said. I think there was a lot of wisdom in what he just said. Uh, we, as a council, we heard some, some tough stuff today. We've got a lot of homework. Looks like we've got a, a full report from BKD, from Baker Tilly, from Cindy Gossett's attorneys. Um, I imagine we probably have a lot, eight hours of reading here to try to digest what, all the information that's been given to us. But I suspect at the end of the day, after we've done all of our homework, probably the best information we got was from Dan Haddon at Baker Tilly, when he said that we have pillars of strength in this community, and we need to basically bring those together, and we need to, to work as a team. He cited the great collaborative optimism of our employees and of the residents of Westfield. I believe that collaborative optimism is here and alive on the city council. I think it is within the administration, and I think I heard it within the clerk's office from the people who spoke here tonight. I think we have to find a way to put this litigation behind us for the good of the city, and we need to find a way to move forward. Those are my comments tonight. I yield the floor to Mayor Cook.
Well, it's obviously been a very emotional evening. I would just like to close by saying I think we all need to take a, a deep breath. We do have a lot to digest here. I think, Mr. Johns, you and I have a meeting coming up very soon, and I think that, at that point, will be a good, a good beginning. We can digest some of this and begin, how are we gonna make it work? And I think we can do just that.
With that, I'm going to end this evening's meeting. Thank you all for attending.